My official gavel. I'd like to call the order, the Planning Zone Commission meeting. We do not have a public hearing tonight. We will go straight into our full meeting. We'll start with roll call. Commissioner Manus.
Dunlop.
Here.
Eichel Berry. Excuse. Hepner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Tomlin, excuse. Ingram.
Present.
Manus, here. Garrington, excuse.
Shilling.
Here.
Thomas, excuse. Schneider.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Commissioner Manus, report of city council activity, Matt.
City council adopted the amendment to the billboard zoning ordinance at last week's meeting. So that's official law now for the city.
Thank you. Secretaries, report.
I'm ready for it.
I'll second.
All in favor of the secretary's report as printed, printed, signify by aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. It will remain the same. Anything on comp plan, Matt?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Zoning activity, we have no old business, but we have two cases under new business. Commissioner Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight we have case REZ 24-02, request of River View Heights LLC to rezone approximately 1.47 acres of land located on the north side of the 700 block of East Sixth Street from R-4C, single-family and two-family central residential zoning district to RMF, multifamily residential district in Ward Three. Staff recommends case REZ 24-02 be forwarded to the city council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the four listed findings and two conditions, and I so move.
Case REZ 24-02 has been moved and seconded for discussion. Matt?
All right, so the subject property, it's bounded by Sixth Street, Sylvan Avenue, and East Seventh Street, consists of an acre and a half of land that's currently vacant. Currently consists of six parcels of land that have been acquired by the city over a period of several decades. So East Seventh Street's a historic brick street, and it's about a block away from the clear house. And then there's also a national landmark, the Greater Praise Temple, at the corner of the block. So this site has quite the elevation change, roughly 35 feet from its lowest point at the corner of Sylvan Avenue and Sixth Street to the highest point, which would be that northwest corner closest to Seventh Street. So this neighborhood is a bit of a bluff that kind of overlooks the Mississippi River and some of downtown. So some of that elevation has created challenges and tests with developing this site for single and two-family housing. So that image on the left is the view from Sylvan Avenue and Sixth Street, just kind of showing you kind of the steep terrain as you look north at the property. The image on the right shows Seventh Street, which is a designated historic brick street that's been patched over several times in different sections. It's a very steep road with narrow pavement, would not meet city standards of construction today, and currently has no sidewalk. So purpose of the request, the applicant is intending to combine the six lots together to create a larger development site, and the purpose for that would be to construct multifamily housing. So existing zoning district is for single and two-family. The purpose would be to rezone to a multifamily residential district, to construct 16 units across four different buildings, so each building with four units. Applicant lists in their proposal an average of 1,500 square feet of living area per unit, includes a mixture of three-bedroom and single-bedroom units, has garage spaces that abut Seventh Street, and then each unit would have patio spaces facing Sixth Street and the river. So this is the concept plan provided by the applicant with the garage access onto Seventh Street, so it'd be a tiered type of development due to the topography of the site. So depending on how you look at it, it's about a story and a half, but with the lockout on Sixth Street. And then here are some renderings provided by the applicant of how that development might look once constructed. So that's a view from Sixth Street, which has a retain while that spans the length of the street frontage. And then here's just another image of what that might look like from across the street and from the pedestrian level. That's the view from Seventh Street with the garages. That's how you would access the property by vehicle. So in terms of dimensional standards, the current zoning district, R-4C, has a maximum building height of 35 feet. The proposed zoning district to multifamily allows for buildings to go up to 70 feet in height. So the applicant's proposed building design, just shy of 34 feet from peak to the lowest grade. So city staff are recommending a condition that the maximum building height be 35 feet to be consistent with that of the surrounding neighborhood. And then, yeah, staff believe that a building that if constructed were to that 70-foot would be out of character for that neighborhood and kind of dominate the context of the surrounding land uses. And then maximum density, so current zoning district allows for single and two-family housing units. So the site is about an acre and a half. So in theory, that site could be further subdivided under the current zoning district to allow for 10 lots with two-family on each lot, so that would allow for by right 20 units of housing under the current zoning designation. So a rezoning to multifamily residential district, the density is one unit per 1,500 square feet of land area. So if you take that acre and a half and divide it by 1,500 square feet, you would get a maximum density of 42 units on that site. So again, city staff feel that that's too much density on that piece of land and are instead recommending a condition that the most units be 16, which is what the applicant is proposing at this time, on that property to help with congestion on the street, traffic, and to address some of the safety concerns raised by the neighborhood. So in terms of purpose statements, so the R-4C district is meant to preserve and protect Davenport's dense, centrally located, and established urban residential neighborhoods, and meant to ensure that development's complementary to the neighborhood. Rezoning to multifamily residential district, that's meant to accommodate a higher density of housing. It also encourages a mixture of different housing types, going all the way from single-family, two-family townhomes to multifamily residential. So here's our development, I'm sorry, here's our zoning map with the subject property highlighted. So predominantly zoned R-4C, single-family, two-family residential. Closest multifamily is about a block away on Eighth Street, and then there's several properties along Tremont Avenue, probably most notably St. Catherine Senior Apartments, about two blocks away on the corner of that map. Future land use map is residential general. So if rezoned to multifamily, the current land use classification is still appropriate. It's generally encouraged to promote density and a mixture of housing types closer to downtown and the urban core of the city, so no change would be needed there if rezoned. So in terms of public input, we notify property owners within 200 feet and also publish a notice in the Quad City Tags. So neighborhood meeting was held on May 29th before the P&amp;Z public hearing. There are seven members of the neighborhood in attendance that raised concerns largely due to the density and the scale of the development, encouraging the development to fit the character of the neighborhood. There is a preference for single-family dwellings and homeownership. Management of the rental units, if constructed, long-term, how would that look for the neighborhood? Then there were concerns raised over traffic, congestion, and safety, and then a number of concerns raised over Seventh Street. So just given its narrowness, the steep grade, there is a preference to preserve the brick street rather than reconstruct with maybe kind of your asphalt. And then conversation over sidewalks and traffic concerns. So following the public hearing two weeks ago, we did receive a formal protest petition with 11 signatures from the neighborhood, with properties highlighted, where those signatures came from. And then we also received a public comment this afternoon, which I have printed out in front of you, and it's also been included in the meeting packet in opposition to the So with that, city staff is recommending approval, subject to the listed findings and conditions. So for findings, the zoning map amendment's consistent with the future land use map, which identifies the property and the surrounding areas residential general. The proposed amendment is compatible with the zoning of nearby developed property and the scattered multifamily development in that neighborhood. With the proposed conditions for building height, as well as the number of housing units, the amendment will enable the vacant site to be developed in a manner that's consistent with the surrounding area. The amendment will not negatively impact public health, safety, and welfare of the city, and the rezoning to RMF doesn't create any non-conformity, as given that it's a vacant site, and can be subdivided to accommodate single-family all the way up to multifamily housing. So with these two conditions, staff is supportive of the request, so again, limit the maximum building height to 35 feet to be consistent with the surrounding zoning, and then limit the dwelling units down to 16 as the most allowed on the site.
Thank you, Matt. Pressure, is there any questions from the staff at this time?
Go ahead.
Pressure, should I?
I'm still trying to envision, having driven that street, how, I don't know how it can handle all that traffic. And then my other question is, is you know they'll have visitors, and where will they park? And how will that affect other homeowners and residents? I mean, that street is very narrow, and even if they do some of the repair, it's still going to be a very narrow street. I still kind of question the water runoff, too, with those structures in the amount of concrete that will be there. I mean, it doesn't seem like it was really addressed, and how we'll handle that?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just trying, you know, he talked about changing part of the road, but it's only, am I correct, it's only where the housing that they're building is going to be at?
So the applicant would have to reconstruct Seventh Street?
The whole street? Or just that part?
I'm not sure at this time if it would go to the applicant's lot line, so the furthest extent of the lot line, or if it would be the full street. But that would be part of the development request, which is separate from the rezoning. And then on top of that, the Historic Preservation Commission would have to review the status of the historic brick street, whether or not that should be maintained or delisted, which would be a separate review. In terms of parking requirements, multifamily housing has a requirement for one and a half stalls per dwelling unit, which the applicant's proposal does accommodate that parking requirement need. And then stormwater management, the development would have to comply with city standards for managing that, whether that be detention time or some type of underground treatment facility that would settle through the development process.
Okay. Pressure, Manus?
Well, I have some kind of what-if questions to ask you. There are six existing lots, and there could be a duplex on each lot, correct?
Correct.
So right now, 12 units could be proposed and developed. If there were a planned unit development, could that be done in three buildings of four units each without rezoning or replating?
You would not be, so multifamily housing is defined as three units or more, so in order to have three dwelling units on one lot would require a rezoning.
Okay, that couldn't be done through a planned unit development involving all six lots without replating?
I believe that rezoning would still be required because that density of housing isn't permitted in that zoning district. A final development plan or a planned unit development would be another option, however, that's not the request.
Let me explain why I'm asking. You know, this is kind of an area where people have been proposing things for a while and nothing has really worked. This is an innovative plan, I agree. And I also understand some of the neighbors are questioning how this is going to work. What I was wondering is if 12 units in three buildings could be built basically as they are proposed, with the whole area involved, and then we basically see how that goes, if everything is working out, and then this blank spot could come in for the additional four units. But I'm looking at all sorts of legal possibilities, how that could happen, and let the developer move ahead with some options for the future. But you're telling me that would not work under the presence zoning, even with the PUD, to develop 12 units in three buildings?
So the reason why that wouldn't be allowed is because multifamily dwelling is three units or more.
Okay, gotcha.
So there are other ways to configure a development. So when we've looked at the lot, the area, the dimensions, the width, you could potentially create 10 lots, each with a duplex, so a total of 20 units would be allowed under the current zoning with a final plan that would further subdivide it that way. But that could be a question for the developer. I'm sure that they've explored different options and approaches to make that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Yeah, so, you know, obviously I realize the whole development planning down the road is something that they have to figure out, right? I'd share Pat's concerns, I just drove there before I came here. I mean, it's, you know, the electric lines run along that very narrow road directly overhead, so I don't think the graphics really accurately represent how that could be developed, right? I mean, I'm not saying it's impossible to develop it, obviously I'm an engineer, you can engineer anything, right? But it certainly doesn't seem, you know, I get, that's not what we're here concerned with. I guess my bigger question is, you know, what is it, you know, certainly it seems that it's zoned properly. I realize switching, this is not a huge leap in zoning. What is it generally that the staff considers as a good reason to change the zoning, other than the fact that a developer wants it? I mean, is there any other reason to change the zoning, other than because we could develop it in this manner? I mean, is there any other favorable, because I guess in other scenarios, sometimes there's other favorable reasons to change zoning, you know, like the neighbors, you know, people want it. You know, is there any other reason that you can think of that benefits the area or the city to change the zoning, to accommodate this, other than it just facilitates the development?
So I guess from a city staff perspective, this isn't a city-initiated rezoning.
Sure, understand.
City staff responds to.
Their request.
To their request.
But does the city, I mean, so I appreciate the conditions that you've put, I think those are smart conditions. I just wondered whether you guys, you know, had any other further discussion internally? I see, from your perspective, you're just, but yeah, you make a recommendation one way or the other, so clearly that recommendation is based on something. So what, why do you recommend to do the change?
Sure, so city staff review six different approval standards that are outlined in the zoning code. So staff study the history of the area, the feasibility of the site, past attempts to develop it, how the proposal fits within the context of the neighborhood, impacts that that might have on the character, on the traffic, on the density, the design of the development, the compatibility of the structures, and then, so staff feel that with the two conditions, that would mitigate concerns in terms of density and number of housing units, and the traffic that gets generated with that, as well as the building height concern. So this height, the north side of Sixth Street does sit on a hill that overlooks the south side of Sixth Street. So the context of having potentially a 70-foot tall building would tower over this neighborhood, and limiting that to 35 feet would basically give it the same height that would be allotted to any other developer or any other property owner on that block to build a home, so that would keep it consistent with the surrounding area.
I mean, do you feel that there's value in the current zoning, the way it's, you know, I mean, clearly there's a reason that we make plans and have zoning laid out, and it is, so I would think usually there should be a significant reason to change zoning.
Right.
I mean, I realize it's, you're not asking, so just want your thoughts about this.
Just a thought, that's really not pertinent to planning and zoning, but, and I'm not sure this is an answer, but what, when you're asking that question, it makes me think, what are the needs? I think a need is, is that we need more housing.
Sure.
You know, and that's a primary need, from my perspective, anyway, that. I don't know, that's not an answer about what planning and zoning would.
Yeah, facilitate more, I understand.
But from an overall perspective, I think we're, are especially closer to an urban, you know, downtown areas where people have access to something and not out so far that they can't, you know, it's, there's not some walkability for people.
Yeah.
Would be a consideration.
Pressure, Manus?
Matt, I am wondering if perhaps this zoning change is approved, but the developer finds things are not feasible financially, or for whatever reason, the company can't proceed with the development. Does having that zoning in place that allows a much greater density, higher building heights, give the owner of that property leverage to come back and say, "Our zone that we have now allows a lot more density, a lot more height. It's not feasible, what was approved, we're asking for a new plan to go a lot more." Is that leverage in place if the zoning is granted, even if the conditions are in place now?
So if the zoning is approved by city council to residential multifamily, and the two conditions, limiting building height and density, are also approved with that, should the developer walk away from the site? That will still run with the land, and will be subject to any other future developer that would purchase the property and then pursue development? And should they try to change the zoning or remove those two conditions, they would have to go through the public process again and petition another rezoning?
And the idea of limiting the basic restrictions of zoning that's in our zoning code, that has stood up and held over time. We can reduce building height, we can reduce density below what the zone allows.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Pressure, Hepner?
Actually, that answered my question. I was wondering if the conditions carried on the property and how long it may last. Thank you.
Mr. Kent, thank you.
So they carry the same weight in perpetuity, I mean, because obviously the zoning, and we've seen, this question is exactly, we have a similar scenario going on right now as well in Davenport, where the initial position has changed substantially from what is currently being proposed. Now, maybe they didn't have conditions in that scenario, but I guess I'm just concerning that likely someone in the future will come back and argue based on the zoning, that it should be allowed to have more density, but I, you know, I get it, hypothetical situations.
There were not conditions.
Yeah, in that scenario, correct, understand, yeah.
Any additional questions at this time? Would the petitioner like to explain your project again?
Yeah.
Briefly.
Briefly, okay. Yeah, so Matt covered most of it. We're proposing four buildings. The reason we combined the buildings in the.
Could you speak up just a little bit?
Okay. The reason we combined the buildings in the quadplexes was to create more separation between the buildings, because there's great differences in the north-south direction as well as the east-west direction. So as you can imagine, we're going to have a lot of varying floor plate, or finished floor heights as we step down the hill. If it was a greater density by having the duplexes, that would be almost like a stair step all the way up, and challenging for the site. So by having the buildings combined and the four quadplexes, we're allowed to have, you know, 20 or 30 feet between the buildings, and allow for that flexibility, make the site easier to construct. Condition on Seventh Street, where, you know, we're planning for improvements of Seventh Street, whether or not it becomes a brick street, or that's, I think, to be told.
Yeah. Joe Mitchell, first of all, I just appreciate the committee considering this proposal to change the zoning. I'm a partner with River View Heights LLC, and I'm young, but I've been doing, the last few years, been doing workforce housing developments across the state, primarily single-family attached, fourplex, twin-home type of developments like this. And I'm from Iowa here, I'm from southeast Iowa, down in Mount Pleasant. And primarily, myself and my partner, Michael, and now Andrew, we, you know, work on redevelopment sites. And so it's infill lots like this. A lot of times, you know, they're grayfield, brownfield properties that have been sitting vacant for years, if not decades, similar to this site. And the type of housing that we're building, when I say workforce housing, it's not low-income housing. And I know normally, when I go places and speak at zoning committees and city councils, a lot of the neighbors think what we're trying to build is low-income or light tech housing, and it's not that. You know, the credit that we're using from the state to try to build this housing was created back in 2015, and it was created to be able to increase our housing stock as a state, and actually be able to build really quality housing, you know, modest housing at the Taj Mahal, but stuff that average, everyday, average people that live in that neighborhood now can afford. And the reason why we like, you know, what I consider the single-family attached or, you know, fourplex, twin-home type of condo, townhome model is because we can still keep costs down enough, where average day normal people can afford that housing there. But it's still going to be, you know, for this case, market rate rent that we have, you know, so the type of people that will be, you know, renting these units will be making between probably $60,000 and $80,000 a year. And, you know, again, you know, time and time again, when I come and speak to committees, there's neighbors that have concerns, and I appreciate their concerns and understand those concerns. I was in Grinnell last year doing a very similar project in an infill lot, and there was a lot of neighbors that were skeptical of the project because it was a bunch of twin homes in a single-family home neighborhood. And there was a lady that lived directly across the street from where we're building, and she said, "Listen, this thing's been vacant, this lot, for 15 years. I'm tired of seeing Danny Leidens over across the street. I want to see kids playing, I want to see older couples moved in, I want to see people over there." And so I think, you know, that's what, you know, very similar to this development, that's what that's about, is about putting really good quality work in there, which we've done time and time again in different communities across the state. And, you know, it's going to be, bring a lot of value, you know, millions of dollars to that community. You know, as far as the traffic concerns and those sort of things, the city staff's clearly looked at that and looked at different reports. You know, but from our standpoint, you know, we can show you guys different examples of projects we've done across the state, but it's always very high-quality, you know, you know, finished housing, tax carriages. It's nice stuff that we're trying to build here, and we're trying to, you know, we care about Davenport. My partner, Michael, is from Davenport as well, and Jim and Andrew, these guys all live here. I'm kind of the odd man out from that perspective, from southeast Iowa, but, you know, they care about the neighborhood, too, and they care about the community. We want to bring good quality housing here to Davenport, and it needs it, just like every other community around the state. And I can tell you, from working with other developers, you know, people are starting to tighten up where they want to build because it's getting harder, with construction costs going up and labor costs, and it's getting harder to find sites that we can build on, too. But we still, you know, feel that this is a great site to want to build on, and it's going to bring a lot of value to the city and to the neighborhood and to the community, and that's why, you know, we want this rezoned. And if we're not able to get rezoned, I think that's puts in the question, you know, the, if we're able to put this project together and get it financed correctly, you know, so I think, you know, that's where we would like to ask you guys to approve this, and we still have to go to the city council, they obviously still have to approve this, and, you know, they could decide not to do that, so, you know, this is, by no So, you know, this is, by no means the end of the road, but we would like your guys' permission today to approve this, at least take this to the next step. And, you know, again, we're gonna have to abide by the covenants that you guys have put on about height and that sort of thing. And, but at the end of the day, we wanna do what's right for the neighborhood and for the community. And, you know, we've done this a lot, and been through a lot of, you know, similar meetings, and heard a lot of the similar concerns that neighbors have here today. But, you know, ultimately, we wanna make sure that infill lot, that vacant lot, has something on there in a short amount of time.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the developers? Commissioner Manis?
I, this may be too early to ask this question, but I am wondering if you expect visitors, guests of the people living in these units to park on Seventh, walk up, or excuse me, park on Sixth, walk up to the front doors and enter that way? So sidewalks on Sixth are important? Or do you expect people to park someplace up on Seventh and enter from Seventh? Do you know yet? It may be too early.
Well, I think, it's early, but I think the intention is to have sidewalk access off of Sixth up to the lower units, most definitely.
Okay.
Because those are units that all have patios with their actual front door being on that side.
Okay.
So Sixth Street will have access. And then also, the garages are set back off of the, off of Seventh Street.
Okay.
To allow for parking in front of the garage, if that would be.
But it's important to have sidewalk access from Sixth?
Yeah.
Up to?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. I'm curious about the proposed, like, square footage of each unit would be, first of all? That's my first question, I have two questions. Like, each unit and number of bedrooms, et cetera? And then my second question, so that question is, it seems as though, and I appreciate, you know, very much, your intent to, you know, to develop and for, and for our infill lots here. But it seems as though in the city of Davenport especially, there are several infill areas. Why would you choose this exceptionally difficult spot? What is the extra interest in this spot?
I've, well, I can't speak for Joe, but I've, I've been aware of this spot for, I don't know, eight, eight years. I like the proximity to the downtown, to the New Y, being able to see the river. The, the neighborhood has a lot of character, history. And I think, honestly, I think there should be a better tie or connection between these villages and downtown, between housing stock and how we can get the two to talk better. But, you know, I was the developer that was trying to build the single-family homes here, a lot, six years ago. So I've had a connection to the site since then, but it's probably part of the reason I'm part of this team now. But that, that plan hadn't, it didn't work. And we had three commitments, one being myself and my family. So I guess I've always believed in the site, and that I think it could work. The units, the three-bedroom units, which had its, so we'll, we'll start the base. The lower level has two bedrooms, that's about eleven hundred square feet each unit. And then the second level, or the garage level, that has one bedroom with a stairway to the considered living attic space that has two additional bedrooms, so three bedrooms. And that unit is around sixteen hundred square feet.
Thank you.
Good. Any additional questions at this time? Norman, go ahead, Mr. Dunlop.
Just one question about the, and maybe this was explained before, the reason rental properties versus, I mean, is this just the economics or what you think the area needs? Or is it something that you can sell condos or something like that?
Yeah, so I can take that. So Jim and Michael are other partners in this. They think, you know, rental properties is the right fit, specifically here in, in the community. And they have a management company where they can be able to manage, you know, tenants and can lease out and take care of the properties. I will say, on the other side, we have several different, myself and Michael specifically, have other projects going on around the state. People are not purchasing homes right now. I mean, the interest rates aren't helpful, the cost to build things is not helpful either. And so I have several projects we've, we're working on currently that were started out as for-sale products, that are four-plex, twin-home, you know, type of housing like this, that we're now switching to rental. And that's just, to your point, that how the economics of it is working right now. I preferably like to do for sale, but that just, people aren't buying unless they have cash. People are not taking out mortgages right now. People my age and Andrew's age aren't, you know, they wanna rent right now because that's what they think is the best way to do it. And so, you know, that's the idea on this, and to keep these as rentals. And we have Jim here as well, who has a property management company that can easily take care of these and lives in the community, so.
Do you have the, the margin development that's close by there, and just down the street that built, are those rentals? Those, there's a large, brand-new structure by the YMCA there, are those all rentals?
The new, the new one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You good, you good? Thank you. Any final questions? At this time, we would normally vote, we did already have our public hearing, where the neighbors were able to speak at length. If there's anybody here that has something new they wanna bring up before we take a vote, I'll give you a minute or two to say it. You just need to identify yourself and make it short. Anybody interested?
Sure. With this development...
Please identify your house and address.
Live at seven-three-four, Seventh. They're proposing to build these four units directly smackdown in front of my home. This is not just a plot of land with daddy blinds and stuff on it. I get why they're trying to congest the area. They want the view that I have right there, and I get that. But due to the fact, if this goes up any farther, what about, okay, this development, with the cost improvement of the area, this called improvement? With rental properties there, my property goes up, I lose the desire of my property for sale and everything, losing my view, there's a brick wall in front of me. Where's my compensation at with this development right there? I put my whole life savings in this home. When I bought this home, it was exactly plotted for what it is. I had two children. They came from the development when I purchased the home, and I put my heart and soul in that home, willing to invite anybody into my yard to see my home. This is my home, and you want me to go ahead with no compensation and look at a brick wall in front of me and say that that's okay? It's not. The development, the land is for what it is. It's not for some entity with money to come in and say, "Okay, I want this desirable view. Let me go ahead and, and forget the neighbors and all the homeowners that is not for it. Just ask to take the historic road away, ask to move power lines, ask to do all this stuff we're gonna have to do." And for us to sit here and say that that's okay? You got to have a heart to realize this is not okay. It's not okay for my life savings and, and everything right here, for my taxes to go up every year from now on out due to this. I don't get no kickback for that. And then, when I sell my place, the desire, if I ever would, which now I might have to, I plan to be a lifer right here for this to happen. That's why I encourage everybody to ride by here and see what's really going on and what we're expecting. Just like one of the board members said, there's a ton of lots right here to build on. And just like the other board member said, I helped with the concrete delivered to all those apartments down there. We have apartments, and like, like you, you said earlier, we need homes. But we have plenty of plots of land to build other homes, instead of congesting the little valley right here. Ask for so much. You're asking for so much to change the street, you're asking for so much to move power lines, you're asking so much to develop on a land that's not really developable. Just because they have money and they wanna strip the neighborhood for what really was, what's there. I built, I helped build all those hut homes down there, volunteer my time to put those foundations in with a good friend of mine that owns our construction. I put my heart and soul over that neighborhood, I brought in all the dirt, I brought in all the semi-loaves and the retaining walls in that, on the properties back there. I helped with the crane and placed those things right there. My heart is in this neighborhood. And I'm like, this is unfair, 'cause I don't have millions of dollars, for them to say, "Strip me from my privacy, let a minimum of forty-eight people, when I come in and out of my home, to say that this is okay for me. I, I gotta just deal with this because we made this decision, that I got all eyes on me, I have no privacy." Everything from a small street that's not even realistically able to take this, no matter how you say it about the acreage and what really could be on this land, it's not built for that. So yes, I never once brought up the view, I brought up real points and everything. I never brought up the dairies in the yard. I never brought up any of that stuff when I just came into the meetings and stated straight facts. I went to the neighbors, communicated, got their opinion of this stuff, and I'm sitting in here. And for us to sit here and table this, it's ridiculous to me, just because they have money and we're gonna take, you guys are gonna help this entity build something just for the view? That's why they're, they're sandwiching something in this area that doesn't even need to be in this area. Kids play there? We're, we're taking away from the future of that neighborhood? We're taking away from, a lot, for money. What's the purposes, like he mentioned earlier? What is the purposes of having this built right here, when he can build anywhere else? Why would we do this to this valley right here? Why would we move all the telephone poles? Why would we try to change the historic of the street? Why would we do that? And then, to table off what Matt said, the commercial areas that has apartments there, it sounds good saying a couple blocks away, but they're in a whole other area of this development. It's not right there. You gotta go up the hill and get to that. It's not like this is a block down the street where you can just see this. It's not. And I know if anybody rode by and seen this, you know why I'm so passionate about this. This is unfair and it's unjustable. I will be seeking compensation for this because I'm impacted with this for the rest of my life over this decision that you guys make. So I hope you guys really understand what's going on and understand why would we do this? Why?
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments?
I think none.
Sir, what was your address?
Seven, seven-three-four East Seventh Street. I'm impacted from the whole development, from getting into my home, the street leaving, everything. I'm the one who voiced the concerns about all that. When I leave, I'm gonna have to come from the end to end. I'm the one that been plowing that area out, I'm the one that been keeping everybody's commute proper in that area for the fourteen years I reside there. From the fourteen years...
Is it too blue, is it the blue?
That's me right there.
On the top?
Yes, yes, indeed. So yes, I mean, and then for these developers to pull up and, and say, "We're gonna do this," and not even knock on my door, to ask me how any of this feels, lets me know that they're selfish and only got their own opinion on what they wanna do, and I'm hoping that the city doesn't agree to say, "Okay, you have the rights to just do this." Strip the hard-han worker guy, and the guy who got all his heart in this area, to say that this is okay. It's not.
Any additional comments? Committee, yes, absolutely. Commissioner Schelling?
I have a question. Because of the lay of the land...
Sorry.
Would these even be handicap accessible? But they could only come in one way, and that would only be from Seventh Street, is that correct?
The, uh, the upper level will be...
But I mean, they wouldn't, if you're handicapped, you couldn't come up from Sixth Street, you'd have to come down from Seventh Street, correct?
More than likely.
It's just a question I had, if it would be handicap accessible? Are there elevators, or just the one level that they could get into?
Yeah, in that, the bedroom that's on that level.
That's part of the two-level development, right?
Uh, yeah.
Right, so I mean, it's...
I think they'll be into one...
Yeah.
One, one, one bedroom.
Right, if you can't access the other two bedrooms of your unit, that's probably by definition not handicap accessible.
Here is the ZO, we're done with the conversation for REZ twenty-four-dash-zero-two. At this time, we will close and take a vote. Roll call, please, Commissioner Manis.
Thank you. Dunlop?
No.
Heppner?
Abstain.
Johnson?
No.
Manis, yes. Schelling?
No.
Schneider?
Yes.
Motion fails, Your Honor.
What was the vote?
Well, no, I'm not sure. Two no, two yes, one abstain.
Oh, it was three no. Three no. Three no.
Three, I'm sorry. Three no, motion fails.
Three no, two yes, and one abstain.
Right.
So this will go forward to city council with a recommendation for denial. Matt, when will the first reading be at city council?
Property owner is within two hundred feet. If you receive the first letter, you'll get a second letter in the mail notifying you of the public hearing. If you need the whole... Which is tentatively scheduled for July third, but that might be relocated to the second. So we'll send you a letter with the appropriate date.
Thank you.
So, so Matt, just to let you know, you don't have us, we're protesting, and you don't have a highlight on your little thing up there, too. So I don't know if that matters.
So this might be because I haven't received a signature for a protest petition?
Oh, okay. All right, well, we're protesting after the thing, so...
Okay. So if you'd like to talk to me after the meeting, I can tell you the...
Okay.
And just explain, the protest level doesn't affect us, but it will affect the voting requirements at council level.
Okay.
Make sure you get registered.
Yeah, I will.
Commissioner Reagan, move on to case ORD twenty-four-dash-zero-three.
Yes, our next case is, I'm sorry, F twenty, case F twenty-four-dash-zero-six?
No. Case ORD twenty-four-dash-zero-three. You're in, you jumped back.
Oh, I must have, I, I printed out the wrong thing, and I apologize. So we have case ORD twenty-four-dash-zero-three, request of Grace Real Estate to amend the principal use standards for neighborhood commercial establishment in section seventeen dash, or seventeen dot zero-eight dot zero-three zero-V of the Davenport zoning code to add daycare center and medical dental office as permitted uses within a neighborhood commercial establishment in all wards. And I believe that this city recommends that the plan and zoning commission forward case... Sorry about that, I printed out the wrong thing. Oh.
ORD twenty-four-dash-zero-three.
And I assume that we recommend that we, for approval? Okay. Subject to any conditions? No? Okay. Okay.
Go ahead, a second.
A second.
Case ORD twenty-four-dash-zero-three, I'm moving in seconded for discussion. Matt?
Okay. So the request is a tax amendment to the city zoning code, and that would be to allow daycare centers and medical and dental office as a permitted use under the definition for a neighborhood commercial establishment. So the tax amendment impacts all properties throughout the city of Davenport where neighborhood commercial establishments are allowed. So our current zoning code allows for a neighborhood commercial establishment only in residential districts as a special use. So special use permits are reviewed and approved by the zoning board of adjustment. So there's an extra layer of over... So special use permits are reviewed and approved by the zoning board of adjustment, so there's an extra layer of oversight that regulates the operation and the intensity of a use within a neighborhood commercial center. So neighborhood commercial establishments, they're a commercial use within a residential neighborhood that's non-residential in its original construction. So typically, that'll include things like churches, schools, or mixed-use buildings, like maybe like a neighborhood commercial store that's allowed within a residential district but not meant for housing. So the intent of the zoning code is really to allow for the adaptive reuse of these buildings. They're meant to preserve Davenport's architectural and cultural heritage, prevent rubric light, and then to extend the useful life of structures as neighborhood needs evolve. So we have just a couple of examples of a vacant church within the city, and then a neighborhood commercial establishment store. So principal use standards for neighborhood commercial establishments, so they're only allowed within a structure that's non-residential in its construction, but located in a residential district. So the area that this really applies to is number two under our principal use standards. So these are the uses that are currently allowed within a neighborhood commercial establishment. So they include things like art gallery, art studio, office space, personal service establishments, that's like your barber shop or your beauty salon. It does allow for restaurants and for retail goods, with the exception of selling alcohol or tobacco. So the applicant's request is to also add a daycare center on this list and medical and dental office. And then there are other standards that help mitigate some of the outside impacts of the neighborhood, like off-street parking requirements. We don't allow drive-through establishments, that generates traffic on streets, storage of product or material outside, and then we also regulate signage for those buildings as well. So daycare centers, that's defined in our code as a facility where for portion of the day, care supervision's provided for children or the elderly or impaired adults in a protective setting not related to the owner. Typically, they're not allowed within a residential dwelling. So daycare centers are predominantly allowed within our commercial districts, as well as our multifamily residential. So the request would be to add this under the neighborhood commercial establishment, potentially opening them up to some residential districts. So there are principal use standards that regulate daycares. The ones that would be applicable under this circumstance is that it must be licensed through the state and that it must provide for pickup and drop-off area for its operation. And then, medical and dental office, that's a facility operated by one or more physicians, such as dentists, chiropractors, psychiatrists, for the examination and treatment of patients solely on an outpatient basis, so no one's staying overnight in a medical or dental office. So these types of uses are allowed in commercial zoning districts, so that could range from just a single physician practice to a much larger multi-physician facility with larger staffs and a larger patient population. So in analyzing the proposed request, city staff feel that allowing daycares within neighborhood commercial establishments is appropriate, that it serves needs of the community in terms of providing affordable childcare, where there's currently a shortage for families. It helps attract and promote younger families to Davenport to live and promote higher quality of life. And then it also addresses some abnormalities, I guess I would say, in our code. One example of that would be a place of worship, so a church is allowed within a residential district, and churches are allowed to have a daycare center associated with them. Our current code would say if that church is gone, a new daycare can establish, despite the fact that that building probably was already a daycare, already had classrooms, maybe outdoor space for children. This would correct that issue in staff's mind. And then the analysis on medical and dental office, because it's required under the spell of use permit, we feel that there's that added layer of review from the zoning board of adjustment, and it's really gonna be dependent on the site. So we have, you know, the small neighborhood commercial stores versus maybe a larger school that goes vacant with a parking lot, so that will kind of dictate the type of medical and dental office, the scale and intensity. So it's limited by site, building, and then impacts on the neighborhoods, so staff feel that that can be regulated through that process. So public input, notice was published in the Quad City Times. To date, we haven't had any one from the public speak on this matter or provide comment. So staff is recommending approval of the two text amendments, but the findings that it's consistent with our comprehensive plan, promotes public health, safety, and welfare, it's consistent with the intent regulations of our zoning code and provided for adaptive reuse of structures, it reflects the change in policy, development trends, and the need for childcare within close proximity to housing in neighborhoods. And then it does eliminate if any non-conforming buildings that currently operate under that standard.
Thank you, Matt. Would the commission have any questions at this time? Would the petitioner like to speak briefly?
Sure, speak briefly, I think Matt did a really wonderful job.
Can you speak up, please?
I'm sorry, I think Matt did a really wonderful job explaining most of the ones here.
You need to identify yourself.
Justin Willis.
Thank you.
Owner of, I'm sorry, partner-owner of Grace Real Estate. Basically, our want was, we purchased this building, and me and my partner involved in several nonprofits helping around the area and some counseling centers. We purchased the building, knowing the congregation that was there previously, and we've allowed them to continue to congregate there, and we kind of set, and we've took a, some polls, and we've allowed the people there to speak about what the neighborhood needed the most, and they came up with something that we really need is daycare here. And so then we went to Matt and talked about, is this even really a possibility? They had daycare centers there before when it was a church, they had classrooms, it's laid out there. As we got to talking, it seemed like there was more of a need than just there, that there might be more opportunity for some of these other buildings and old schools that have kind of gone on the wayside because if no one knows really what to do with them, that this might be a possibility, since from my understanding, there's a big need for daycare centers. And as far as the medical and dental, we got there, obviously having a background in counseling, we thought maybe from our purposes of our building was just to try to find a counselor who could work with the children down there if the children needed services, counseling services down there, medicates to do something to be able to help them out if they're, while they're down there in daycare, if they needed something, if there's something going on at home, that they would have an option for that. So that's our wants in this. I, I do say that I think it would be helpful, the city over, and that's why we went this route as far as the text change, because I think it could do a lot of good outside of any of my own personal wants for the city over. That's all I got, thanks.
Thank you very much. The commissioners, any questions? Anybody in the audience?
No.
Anybody in the audience?
I think it's a good idea. I have property, I have property right by...
Please identify.
Oh, I'm Ray Correllson.
Okay.
And I, I have property and stuff, and we lived on the west end of Davenport, we were there by Grace for many years, and I think it's an awesome idea to make that a daycare, so.
Thank you.
And they're right, we do need more daycare.
Thank you. Any final call for questions before the vote? Saying none, roll call, please, Commissioner Mayes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Shilling?
Yes.
Maynes, yes. Johnson?
Yes.
Hepner?
Yes.
Dunlop?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, we'll move on to subdivision activity. Commissioner Hepner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, tonight, case F-twenty-four-dash-zero-six, request of entertainment tonight, LC, for a final plat of Truckland Industrial Park, second edition. The two-lot subdivision is located in thirty-six-eighty West Eighty-third Street on two-point-eight-one acres in the second ward. Staff recommends the Plan and Zoning Commission accept the listed findings and forward case F-twenty-four-dash-zero-six to the City Council with a recommendation for approval, subject to three listed conditions and ISO move.
Second.
Case F-twenty-four-dash-zero-six, been moved and segmented for discussion, Matt?
All right, so the subject property located on the north side of Eighty-third Street, just to the west of Northwest Boulevard. It's currently industrially zoned, there's two buildings on the site. The intent would be to divide the property in half, so put each building on its own separate lot, and then there's a shared parking lot in the middle. There are currently two driveways accessing Eighty-third Street, so each site would have its own separate access point to the development. So there's just another image. The building on the right, I believe, is an adult use, and then there's a multi-tenant building on the left around the west portion of the property. So this area, it's all zoned light industrial, so that won't change with the plat. Also showed as industry on a future land use map, so both the uses currently fall under that correct category. And then up on the screen, we have the proposed final plat, so simply just dividing the property in half, each property having its own access point. Currently, staff isn't aware of any development or any plans to redevelop the property, it's likely just to facilitate sale of the land. So with that, staff is recommending approval, plat conforms with the comprehensive plan, prepares the area for future development, and is consistent with subdivision requirements. And there's just three conditions, first two are pretty standard. The third one would be that sidewalks be constructed when so ordered by the city of Davenport.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Hepner?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to note that case F-twenty-four-dash-zero-six is listed as a subject, however, F-twenty-four-dash-zero-seven is listed on the literature that Matt has shown, so there's a slight discrepancy.
How do you feel?
Clarify that.
Thank you.
So I'm not sure which is correct. Let's get to the bottom of this.
Six, zero, seven. Maybe you couldn't count down there, Tom, but...
Sorry. I will confirm, so goes the City Council with the correct...
Thank you.
That's all I asked for.
Thank you. That's a reservation. You get bonus points for that. Any additional questions before we take a vote? Assume the petitioner is in here?
I have no, does not look like it.
The Towns of Engineering.
Oh, okay.
Oh, sorry.
The Towns of Engineering were representing the petitioner.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to overlook, I saw you two talking, I thought you were together, it's my mistake. Any questions for our vote? Saying none, roll call, please, Commissioner Mayes?
Dunlop?
Yes.
Hepner?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Maynes, yes. Shilling?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you. That would conclude subdivision. Thank you, Commissioner Hepner, any old or new business, Matt?
So we will not have a meeting in July second due to a lack of business. Enjoy the holiday.
Thank you. Any future business you'd like to speak? Any indications, anybody? Saying none?
Want to do a adjourn?
Second to motion.
On favor of adjournment, signify by aye?
Aye.
Close, same side, hear none, we are adjourned, thank you.